At least. I don't know why we can't get it up on the TV. I'll figure that out tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so any? Any comments on the minutes?
But they were great.
Okay.
Second, their brightness.
These second, okay. All all of sort of I have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay.
Because they're great.
All those in favor?
They're the greatest minutes we've had this week.
All those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because I missed the meeting.
We missed you.
Yes, we did miss you and and it's understandable that you.
In California, then back.
Wow.
So, all right, so folks. Who are we missing? The riches, no, the riches aren't coming. So, so is this it? Is this everybody?
Somebody that just came through the door.
Yeah, well, I expect I expect people from from the. Energy Committee.
Can't do anything without Mark.
Oh, it's the dude. It's the dude himself.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so. Why don't we get started? Mark sent in. Something and and by and large, it's fine with me. I think there's only a couple of things that I would have questions about. So we could work from that if.
Take off the thirteen megawatts.
That's fine with me. I mean, I only put that on because. I thought.
Well, I did come with data.
Yeah, well, yeah.
We trust all this data.
Why don't you tell us what the correct data is and we can decide whether we want to have that in there? I mean, anything where we can save space. Are are you going to? Put this together for us?
Sure.
That's very nice of you.
Sure.
Because, yeah, you'll you'll need room to squeeze those in. But go ahead, yeah.
I know how to write abstracts, right? Suck those adjectives right out. Um, so when I was in my role for the line electric aggregation group, I had gotten data from both. Ever Source and New Hampshire Electric Cooperative. And that's where I had come up with about nine megawatt hours as being the long lines load.
For what?
Year.
For year.
Yeah. And I I wasn't quite sure where the thirteen was coming from or.
I just remember the thirteen that we had something like yours and then somebody said whatever.
And I can share this if anybody is curious, but. Um, it's about. Two fifths, three fifths. Ever Source and two fifths.
So what what was the the number? Ten or something?
Um, eight.
Oh, eight.
Eight, um, eight thousand, six hundred. So that's why I said nine.
Much less.
Does that subtract out the ten or twelve percent of people who have residential solar?
Well, you can't tell about them except for what their load is, what they actually are drawing. If there's if they're just using it locally, it looks like their load is decreased.
Okay.
But they still show up as a customer. So I have both customer counts and the amount.
Okay. Sure. So so automatically subtract out.
Well, I don't think ever source or after they they don't even know it never hits the system. If it's used.
So if there's a significant amount of local solar generation, then the actual usage will be greater than nine, it would be.
Could be, yeah, could be thirteen.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's a very useful. It's a very useful number.
I do. I think it's a little bit useful for just like grounding the size of the problem.
All right, so do people want to use it?
And not not belaboring it in any way, but just. This is this is what we need to think about is what the town needs.
Just gives them a sense of.
All right, so so what what's give me give me a a real number to you?
No, I think around nine because everybody's, you know, adding.
Okay.
Electric heat pumps and electric cars and so.
Because the average is what, six hundred and thirty kilowatts a month for for?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can we say that, I mean, to make it so that it is Lime's annual energy use? Not counting that produced by solar.
Well, let's not, you know.
Please, no. Okay, all right, all right, all right.
This is 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 a very.
Yeah.
What's that?
You could say that energy years.
Okay.
Tom, can you help me figure out which one you're using? Because when.
I'm using a mark.
But you see, they don't, they don't know, they put their names on the.
So the first, the first line would say. The planning board wants your input on multi acre ground. Got it?
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna say Lime's annual net energy.
No, sorry.
I don't have. Red years.
Okay.
If anyone needs. Up here, I can give you a. Doesn't work.
So, uh, no, nobody, nobody seems to be responding, but.
Where are you?
Um, we're I'm still on the the nine megawatts Lime's annual net energy usage. Just finishing off with that.
Should be megawatt hours.
Yeah.
And it should be megawatt hours?
Yeah.
This is Mark's, right?
The first line has multi acre. No, that's not his.
There you see Mark right here.
Yeah, that's still different. Oh, here it is. Here it is. I got it.
So I I'm just gonna read through and hopefully we can. We can get through this. Um, the. Planning Board wants your input on multi acre ground mounted solar energy systems. Please read the information below. Reply. I don't think I need to read this next part. We've. Nobody had any comments about that.
Well.
Okay, never mind. At at the yes, what did you want to say?
I want to add something.
So I just I would just like to ask. To be, um. Now, never mind, I won't bother.
We'll fix it after.
Yeah, we'll fix it after.
Yeah, well, this is just a. Suggestion. The past year, well, that last sentence where we go through rapidly changing and often confusing energy landscape. I was wondering whether we want to add, we have learned there are various. Options to meet this goal.
I don't know that that adds a lot for the space it uses up.
You know, because we're not going to talk about the options.
Well, I was just thinking it lets people know that it that there are various, you know.
Well, actually, the narrative does let people know that.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yes. Um. Okay. So so that part is okay. Um, so, um. Mark had potentially relevant background data. I I would just go with background data. The potentially relevant is implied. Or more than implied.
About reference data.
Uh, I mean. Whatever.
You talking about this little tape?
Yeah, yeah. What do people? People want background reference? I don't care. What are they?
It really is reference. It really is.
Okay, reference, yeah, you you guys are.
But, okay.
Right, reference data.
Okay, I guess there's a lot of technique. Jargon.
Yeah, okay. Reference data. Okay, one acre. I don't know. Why there's a period there. There shouldn't shouldn't be a period. One acre, um, a gym nurse suggested a football field without end zones. I thought that was that was good. Especially in conjunction with two acres of mine common, and then it's pretty easy to figure anything else out. That okay with everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Current maximum coverage area allowed on a lot equals about a half an acre. I added that because. Uh, people seem to be upset with the. Word major. Um, I I do. So I took out major, but. The reason it's major is because our current maximum coverage area is about a half an acre, so. If we have five or seven acres, that is a major change in the ordinance just for that alone. But it's fine with me not to have major and just to have this in there so that people. Can have a reference for. The the change that would be coming.
We lowercase maximum, please.
Oh, yeah.
So you're you're saying that the current. Is.
About a half an acre. It's like twenty six thousand feet is the most. Coverage you can have on per lot.
Per lot.
Yeah.
Which can. He's not, so it's not. It's not indexed to how.
No, you could have a hundred acre lot. Uh, or.
If you had a half an acre lot.
David, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I'm not. I'm not correcting your.
I'm right, okay.
So if you have a half an acre lot, you can fill it completely.
No. Well, you know, you you're. The footprint and lot coverage are a percentage, but. They max up, max out at twenty six thousand square feet.
Yeah, I mean, if you're on a quarter of an acre, you can't have twenty six thousand.
And it depends on what district you're in. How many, how much percentage you can fill. So, you know, if you have, you know, five hundred acre lot and says you can fill. Six percent. That's going to be well over the twenty six thousand square feet, but it top that maximum tops out in twenty six thousand square feet. So it's either twenty six thousand square feet or six percent.
Is that true for agricultural use also?
Yep.
So that means no building.
There's some agricultural buildings.
Thousand square feet.
Um, some exceptions.
Which is pretty good.
It's a half an acre.
I'm gonna make sure you use it as an agricultural building.
Not compared to Amazon warehouses.
Putting a barn, a barn is not an agricultural.
Right.
Well, the teller's barn.
Used.
Teller's barn is.
Agriculture on your property.
And I just wanted to get that straight.
All right, so, um. So that's that. So in in this next line, um. I think, um, Mark is a little confused here, but anyway. One megawatt of solar needs five to seven acres and then he he put in parentheses, he's. Including the open space between rows of solar panels. Um.
That's confusing.
Uh, yeah. Because we haven't even addressed whether we're gonna.
How we're gonna measure.
How we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
So I I don't think we can put that in.
Addressed how we're going to.
Well, we're going to have to probably with the with the, um. Conditional use. Permits. Which is like site plan review, um, or or a special exception, we're going to have to have criteria. For how the space is handled.
Don't, but isn't that sort of? Part of the design that's not within our realm?
It can be with our, we have, we have to decide whether we're we don't care. Or whether, um, we're going, we're gonna have rows, uh, spacing. I I don't have an answer for that. We haven't addressed that yet.
I don't know. I don't see why we would get into.
Well.
If they have an efficient way of doing. A.
That's something we're.
Solar array.
That's something we're we're gonna have to discuss. The, I mean, the whole board is gonna have to decide that. We're we're not at that stage.
So I have a more basic problem with like one megawatt does not equal five to seven acres. We've already started this like, oh, we're thinking about an acre and that is the line, you know, two acres is the line common. But one megawatt, you know, so what we need to say is to cite. In one megawatt. Solar energy system, you need five to seven acres because it doesn't equal.
And that's in that, yeah, I think that is why. I mean, there is a reasonable point that was brought up by you that it could just be solid panels.
Yeah.
And which is, which is not realistic. That's not.
I think that's what Mark is trying to.
Right.
Was suggesting that language, but, um. Sorry, I don't know everyone's name yet, but that.
Oh, no, no, but please, thank you, thank you for.
Phrasing that you just had, um, was was. Useful to say that that's.
Yeah, to cite a one megawatt.
Okay, so. So please repeat.
So it's to cite. A one megawatt. Solar energy system. Who would need five to seven acres?
Solar energy.
It's like a one megawatt. Solar.
Energy system. Um, requires.
Requires, yep.
Yeah, so I want to, you know, uh. This is such since you're here, uh, Mike, and thank you for coming. When I was reading through the, uh. Um, the different things from the the Energy Committee. Somebody was five to eight, six to eight, what what's her, what's her?
Seven is is a reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
It is, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so. Grabbing this lawyer's perspective, I'd be adding weasel words in here. I'd be.
Typically. Well, this is not the regulation. This is the.
No. Yeah, I mean, I think that's. You know, I would have said. One megawatt solar typically means five to seven acres, so you give yourself a little.
Okay.
Room, but, uh.
That's that's useful. And you watch if you can include a.
And typically, only fifty percent is occupied by panels.
Yeah, you you really want to. You want to settle that. But we haven't. We need the whole board.
Well, that's why typically gets us out of that.
No.
Like typically five to seven or just.
You're getting ahead the ahead of the train.
But I think if you're if you're being, I don't want to say verbose, but if you're we're being so descriptive about the one megawatt facility, that's where you can get into the concept, where you can. Find a way to add the concept of. That five to seven acres includes. Whatever spacing there would be between panels. If you had a. If you had a, you know, you're paving the top, you're you're making a parking lot of solar panels, you would need less than five.
Okay.
But I think when people, when people think of this. It's what the area is. They aren't looking at how much space between panels. It's like. You know, an array is what it includes, the whole the outside dimensions. They don't think about the middle.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things about this is, this is a reference status, so. From, I'd like to keep it short. Um, so that people just look bing dang bang boom, and then they can get into the body. I think there might be another place in.
Be a place in the body.
I think there's a place in the body where.
I think that's useful because you're talking about the total.
Because on the second page, uh, Mark. Brings that up again.
Yeah.
So maybe maybe that we could address it there. Okay, so. You know, then there was, uh, seemed to be some controversy about the hundred and sixty households. I just put that in there because somebody mentioned it. We don't need to. Uh, you know, if we don't.
What did it say?
Uh, in the next line, uh, I'm, uh, in the same thing with the one megawatt, it's and could be enough to power roughly a hundred and sixty households. We don't have to have that in there because it seemed to be a little bit controversial.
We all have different drafts, so.
Okay, so.
Working off the. Red line.
This is red.
Mark.
This is Mark.
Yeah.
It was Mark's last name.
The first line.
Volger.
The first line should have multi acre grounded mounted, ground mounted on it. In the middle.
The very top.
The very top, the first line, the planning board wants your input on multi acre ground mounted. That's the, um, Marx is the only one that has that.
Yep.
Okay. So do we want to keep that in or take it out? The the hundred and sixty households. I don't care.
I think take it out because people are gonna. Figure out, I mean, they might want to figure out how much line would need to do the whole town, but they're not gonna sit around and try to divide how many. Houses.
I mean, taking stuff out is fine with me.
I think you could take out economically feasible commercial development too. And just leave it typically five to seven acres.
That's fine with me.
We're just thinking about sizes.
How's that? How's that sound to you?
Uh, I think all of that sounds good. The one piece that I think is gonna get might get. A late person confused is what's gonna happen next is. You've got the nine megawatt hours as long as solar usage. I could see a late person getting confused saying of one megawatt system, so that means you need five of these for one. But they're different units, they're different units.
So would it be, so you you're saying?
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you're saying keep the economically feasible?
No, I'm talking about the hundred and sixty.
All right, I just cross those out.
Well, I I. I think that's, I.
So then if what about this? If if we move the nine megawatts underneath. The twenty five years on up so that. It's it's not.
Um.
It's actually, um, it's grounding information, but it's not really reference data per se.
It's all useful information. The the problem is there's there's one additional piece of math that needs to come from that between that.
Eight.
Numbers, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Go from megawatts to megawatt hours, like. There's.
Is there another name for megawatt hours that doesn't use the word megawatt?
Uh, you could, you could, uh, one megawatt hour is a thousand kilowatt hours, so you could do that conversion.
What? We could move the the stuff about how much.
What what? How many megawatt hours does?
I think you could also say, so one megawatt of solar energy five does have, you know, with or the sighting would take takes approximately five to seven acres and produces.
Oh, maybe that's a good idea.
Whatever the, I I forgot the conversion, but I think it's like roughly one one point. Or one thousand two hundred.
Well, what if we just, um. Oh, no, that wouldn't.
Well, I like that, that that's good, and then then we don't have, and then we.
All right. So what's what's the wording? One megawatt of solar energy? Uh, what?
Decide. Decide a. A one megawatt. Well, energy system typically requires five to seven acres.
To cite a one megawatt.
Solar.
Solar energy system typically requires five to seven acres.
And provides. So many.
And.
Megawatt hours.
Well, how many?
Well, it varies on how much sun you get.
Well, I think that's Mike's.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I included that in the. In an earlier version.
Well, that's what you.
No, he said one point two.
I'm.
No, no, no.
Think it might, I think it might be roughly twelve.
That's what I said.
Yeah, okay, and provides.
Twelve hundred? Twelve hundred what? Megawatt hours.
That's what it produces.
Impossible.
Okay, we shouldn't be putting stuff in here that we're not sure about.
Hundred, so that's.
The whole of Lime only fires nine. Nine. Megawatt hours.
For a year.
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand. Right.
So. All right, so so where are we with this? What's the right number?
I will, so I can't find what I what I said before, but.
I might, I might have, I might have what you said.
My recollection is that we're somewhere around.
I have what you said. So.
Twelve hundred megawatt hours.
Do you want to look through this and?
Yeah. The map on.
Yeah, I have it in your.
Yeah, one point two gigawatt hours, that's twelve hundred megawatts.
Twelve hundred megawatt hours.
Twelve hundred megawatt hours.
Per year. So and and that's.
One megawatt.
Gotcha.
So here you have. Uh, G W H.
That's gigawatt hours, so that's a that a gigawatt.
So, so what what? Just tell me what's right down here, twelve hundred.
I got it. I think she's, I think she's got it.
The site of one megawatt solar energy system typically requires five to seven acres and provides twelve hundred megawatt hours per year.
But with the megawatt hours, should that be, should should that be the G W H?
She's got it.
And then it's, and then you just go right into produce.
It's just different math.
Provides.
Different units, but.
Yeah, you get a witch provides or something.
Is that that which and which, yeah. Which generates, you like that better?
Yeah, that's generates is better. Or you could start with a one megawatt system requires five to seven acres for citing and produces twelve hundred megawatt hours. Or generates, yeah, I generate.
I I leave it to you. People, what do people want? All right, well. You already wrote it down. Let's stick with that.
But generates.
Okay, uh, and then we have the nine megawatt hours.
Thousand.
What? Nine thousand?
Nine thousand sounds.
Yeah, nine thousand megawatt hours.
Megawatt hours.
That'd be nine.
That's Lime's annual.
Annual net energy usage, okay? Nine thousand.
Megawatt.
Megawatt hours.
Is the end Lime's annual net energy.
Equals Lime's annual net energy usage.
Yep, right.
Okay, twenty five years on up, lifespan of a large solar array.
Isn't the expression twenty five and up?
It could be, uh, I'm, I, my rule with this was to use as few words as possible.
Okay.
And is is.
One more letter.
Yeah, flows better than.
Say twenty five years is the.
You like and we can add and, okay, twenty five years end up.
Is that true, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the lifespan.
Yeah, they seem to say.
Manufacturers right now are generally warranting for twenty five, twenty to twenty five years.
Right.
And so what they'll say is that they'll, you know, provided it's still around the twenty five years, they guarantee it that you would be able to test the the panel and get. Eighty five percent of the power that you'd be able to get out.
If we're. And if you can't, they replace it or something, yeah.
Yeah, that's failing the warranty. If you like any, if you like anything that failed the warranty, you may have.
But hopefully in twenty five years, we won't even have these solar panels anymore, so they'll be totally clearly antiquated.
All right, moving along. Um, presently over twelve percent, well, this, okay, I'll just read through presently over twelve percent of line properties produce electricity directly through small scale and roof granted. Mounted panels, this percentage is among the highest in the region is expected to grow. That power is both created and used in line. Because there is no single integrated grid in America, much of the clean energy, uh.
Yeah, we decided to take that out, didn't we?
Yeah, I mean.
Clean renewable.
It seems like.
Taking out all the stuff about RECs.
No, we didn't, we didn't agree to that.
But I guess it it is true that at least two. People who are experts.
Yeah.
Have expressed. A little sketchism about the whole Rex system.
Who else? Oh, are you skeptical of it as well?
Of Rex?
Yeah.
Well, or what I guess, what do you mean by skeptical?
Uh, well, I, you think that the validity of Rex, particularly at the low price end, is sketchy?
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's sketchy. I think I think you just have to know what it is that you're 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 claiming. But I think, no, I think it's it's absolutely, I think it's absolutely a valid way to. Uh, you know, and frankly, it's something that the developer, you know, even if it's a fifteen year old project, whoever built that project was counting on being able to get some value for the clean energy.
I.
Because we talked to N R G, we talked to N R G, and those guys were saying that Rex. Really fun.
Yeah, Mark feels very strongly about that. I've also spoke, I was on an hour. Zoom call with Brian Cowan. And he had a very different take on it. Um. And he had a very different take on it, um. I spoke to Steve Dogg about it, he has a different take on it.
I've I've certainly got a bias today.
But you said one can theoretically green up one's electricity.
Manage uh wind farms and stuff, so I believe strongly that facts are necessary to.
Yeah, I mean, it's how you convert.
It's 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 what makes the system.
I think the big problem is if anybody tries to double count. And that's that's that that and Rex will be a whole.
You know, there isn't a single. You you can, you can.
Right.
Rex have flaws in them. And you're gonna have some. Uh, some of the Rex going to less ideal uh projects than others. But you're also gonna have some of the money coming from the government. Being embezzled and, you know, it's not a perfect system.
I would say it's the best, it's it's the best system that we've that we've got, and it is. There is, there's that, there's that double counting.
Yeah, and I think it's.
When you get, when you get into like double counting and this notion that. Uh, some of them, some of these Rex will are providing no incremental environmental benefit at all, which are your words, right?
No, I would not, definitely would not be my word.
No, that's that's gotta be Mark.
Okay.
So Mark feels very strongly about it.
Okay, so.
And I respect it, but I I think it's very, I think Rex work. And I think it's very important to explain.
Why?
To explain why?
Yeah.
So that people understand the the system.
That's gonna require the like the twelve page article that.
So the question is, do. Are Rex even relevant to the survey that you're.
Exactly.
If the question at hand is.
So.
What is acceptable from a.
Right.
I'm I'm willing to. Differ, but I'll also give my opinion before you all tell me no. I would just say, let let me just. Part of. Writing this narrative to me is um what would I wanna know? Because. It's only because I'm on the board that I know anything at all. I would be a year ago or two years ago, was completely ignorant. And one of the most. One of the biggest things that I found fascinating was how how this stuff works. People are under the impress uh under the impression I would have been, like when when we got the um. The clean energy, you know, from direct energy and stuff, I thought, oh, I'm getting. Clean energy, I don't know how how they're doing it, but they must somehow, it must be a series of tubes and they magically move it over. This explains how how all of this stuff works. I think it's very informative, but I will defer to the majority.
I think that that the concept of Rex and the separation of these green attributes. From the actual electricity is inherently difficult. It immediately brings up this issue of double counting. If you own one of these power plants. And, you know, you you have to, you actually have to get into the weeds of it. It's it's the, it's not the electricity that you make. It's what you put into the grid that Rex are.
Now, this is a two page, very general.
Exactly, that's why I think you should just eliminate any discussion of Rex.
Let let me just go around the table and ask everybody to vote on whether they wanna take this out or not. I I would like to keep it in.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my feeling is that, I mean, I agree that it's so Rex are so basic to all this. Whole stuff we're learning about.
Yeah.
Seems like it's gotta be, people have to know about it somehow.
It it's uh sort of the building blocks of the whole system.
But it ends up raising more questions than, and 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 you don't really have to say, all you have to do is say that you could find a provider. Who would sell you a hundred uh uh energy that came from a hundred percent.
I I don't wanna get caught up on this, let's vote. Up or down and then move on.
Cool.
You you wanna get rid of it?
I think so.
I'd like to keep it, what do you wanna do?
Keep it.
Down, okay. Sir? Okay, so it loses, so what do you wanna take out?
They get all the Rex. Paragraph.
Starting where?
Because.
Okay, to where?
Next.
To where?
Next.
Next.
Yeah, so before before can they can, just before community powers to spread.
You see what she's.
Soon Lime will have the option of joining nonprofit. Jumped.
Oh, way down here.
So it's.
So just take out, so take out the whole first paragraph.
Take out the whole.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, because all the way.
Because there is no single integrated grid in there, okay?
Uh, no, uh, uh, yes, 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 because, yep. Yep.
Alright, okay.
So the. The suggestion that I had was that. You go right from. That electric power is both. Uh created and used in line, beyond residential solar panel arrays, there are several other ways for the town to achieve its hundred percent renewable goal. For example. Lime residents should know that they have the option of switching suppliers to one that offers a hundred percent. Uh, green renewable energy source of electricity.
So where are you reading from?
My own.
Oh, this is yours.
So when I I sent it to Dave about two hours ago, he couldn't get it. Yeah, um and so then you get that out of the way, that's one of the options, and then you go right into the second one. The Lime community will also. Likely have the option of joining a nonprofit community power aggregation coalition. Of several regional towns in order to leverage their buying power to get access to cheaper and greener energy. So that takes care of both of those options.
I like that.
Alright.
Yeah, I like.
Yeah, so we're taking out what?
And then you, and so so basically.
So this whole paragraph of that.
Well, it just has changed.
Yeah, but I mean, for the changes, I'm just gonna cross this out, and that's gonna be replaced by that. Right.
And then you go right to another way, and then you get into.
Alright, just hold hold on until everybody has.
Two paragraphs.
Okay, so. We have the, oh, I see, so you just, uh, okay, I got it.
Is it the front, this this?
It's this.
It's right here, right, right, the the second paragraph on this.
Um, second paragraph, another way to a hundred.
Well, that's where we're starting, that's where we are now.
Yeah.
And. Um, and that's the. The allow larger non-residential solar arrays, that's the third, that's the third option.
What?
So where the other?
Yeah, the other two were embedded in that in that paragraph above.
Oh, oh, and above, okay.
Okay.
And.
They're listed right after you get into.
Yeah, so starting with beyond, beyond, yeah.
Yeah, beyond.
Okay.
Wait, I'm lost again.
Yeah, I'm I'm lost.
So so.
Let's just read through this. Presently, over twelve percent of line properties produce electricity directly through small scale residential roof and ground mounted solar panels. This percentage is among the highest in the region is expected to grow. That electric power is both created and used in line beyond residential solar panel arrays, there are several other ways. For for the town to achieve its hundred percent renewable goal. For example, Lime residents should know that they have the option of switching suppliers to one that offers a. Hundred percent green renewable energy source of electricity. The Lime community will also have the option of joining a nonprofit community power aggregation coalition. Several several regional towns in order to leverage their buying power to get access to cheaper and greener energy. I think that's very good.
I'd like to um make a change to the sentence that begins, the Lime community will likely also, and uh. I know there are people here who believe that, but that process is underway and is not at all certain.
Will will possibly.
May, I would just change it to may also have the option of joining. So it might not. Yeah, of course, that has to, it has to be voted on by the by the town and and. I I know there are people here who weren't involved in that effort, and it's hopeful that it will succeed, and it may succeed, but I I don't like to predict the future.
So so David.
Yeah.
For the people uh are, you know, who are gonna be gathering with pitchforks and torches, where should they find you?
No, he's right, it should be May, cause it hasn't happened yet.
It hasn't happened yet, and and it's a vote, and 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 so I I I don't know, I just don't like to. Predicting the future is very reasonable.
I think the chances are good, but we still should say May.
Maybe you're right.
That's what the leak group has been saying all along.
Yeah.
That we're, this is, we think this is likely a good way to go, but we're not.
It's con- conditional.
Conditional.
Okay, let's go to the next, another way to a hundred.
Start of uh that new language, somewhere in there was uh a remark about residential. There are a few uh solar panels on businesses online as well, if they want to.
Oh, it says, yeah, that's, so it says the. Small scale residential roof and ground mounted solar panels. So we have businesses that have.
You know, there should some businesses, they say, well.
So I think if you just.
Just take the.
Just take residential.
But and then. But when they make the vote, the vote didn't necessarily include businesses.
It's it's.
With Lime residents.
It's inherent, and it's, I think it's. I was trying to thread and needle through the.
And then in, and then in the third cent, it's the fourth sentence, beyond residential solar, we just take residential out of there too.
Where was the first, that's where I took it, oh, small scale residential?
Yes.
Okay, so we're taking residential out.
I don't know, I think residential is a, it's a nice way of separating. The things that are already allowed from the things that we're debating here. Yeah, I know, it does correlate with size, but it's a nice way for people to understand it, just to use that.
I think I'm I'm more thinking of the solar panels on here, residential.
But these are the equivalent residential, they're.
But they're not, they're 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 not legally residential.
Take out the word residential used off small scale, which I think is more.
And Wagner's roof has been there for.
Well, library, the school.
Yeah. Wagner's room.
On the second. On the third line down there, if we take out residence where it says beyond residential solar panel arrays, we take out residential, I think. People may get confused, we just say beyond solar panel arrays.
Beyond small.
Think about.
Beyond small scale.
Well, you could say residential and municipal.
Well, cause there's business.
Would once has got solar panels too.
Alright, so what are we saying?
Beyond small, yeah.
Small scale.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
How about uh non-residential, can that, can that stay?
Uh, where is?
Well, I use it in the next paragraph as a as a distinction between. Uh, eh eh to define what we're really talking about here, which is non-residential. Either group net metering systems or commercial projects.
I I think the distinctions between. I don't think we can use residential, uh that was already brought up early in the process. And for larger, we can say.
Wouldn't you say larger?
Larger.
Larger commercial or commercial.
Say commercial scale, so.
Commercial's gotta be distinguished from group net metering, which I think is the different model.
Okay, so.
And and the only reason to, but 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 group net metering is what has the cap on it at a at a one megawatt. So you you really wanna be able to deal with that as opposed to the larger ones that have no cap. Um, in this state. But so.
Well, you're.
It's still commercial. As far as I'm concerned, from the the zoning ordinance, it's a commercial venture. But we don't need to necessarily follow that. In this letter.
True. Yeah, but I also think. You know, getting caught up on on. These terms is unnecessary.
But it seems to me that there, you know, people, when you, you know. Th- this board has a very good understanding of a lot of the issues, somebody reading this for the first time. Who has no, has had not had the background that the board members have. They're looking at it, you have rooftop solar, some small solar arrays in your yard, and then you have these large commercial. Systems that cover the ground in large areas, those are the two things that they're going to. Speed.
Right.
And so I think you wanna differentiate saying. We're not worried about the those small little systems, whether they are part of a business, they're. Um, you know, accessory to a a home, don't care. It's the large ground mounted systems that take a a large area is what. We want people to focus on and think about that.
Right.
That's why you, you know, I think I'm glad we got rid of the Rex, and I I even think you should get rid of the uh town meeting vote. I think it's doesn't have anything to do.
The next paragraph.
No, that's the very first. Uh, I've always thought that was just a distraction.
Okay, well, what do people think?
It doesn't, um. I think it's a straw man, in a sense, at least it, at least you said it out there. As.
Was straw man as as a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, it's just a straw man, it's just there to be symbolic of why we are now talking about this. Because that's where.
I I personally, like I, when I see that, I think it it brings into context why why you're having this discussion.
So maybe you should add some wording saying, you know, be, you know, saying here at the vote, the vote was taken, and now this is why we are doing this.
Well, I think that's implied, that's involved, and then it says under for the past year, the board has met with many experts. To enhance this understanding of the, you know.
Well, David, if if you were, if you were trying to figure out what the opposite of, or not the opposite, but what the alternative was to. Large group net meter installation, what what word would you give? Well. Again, I'm I'm looking at this as people who, you know, out in the community are are. They don't care what, they don't know what the term net metering. Is, there are very few, if you walk up to anybody, say, what is group net meter? They're gonna, their eyes are gonna glaze over. They're not gonna be able to explain it to you, but they've heard it before. Ev- everybody's heard it before, and the twelve percent that actually own the devices are are, they know exactly what it is. That's twelve percent. Right. A minority. Probably the twelve percent is gonna fill us out.
That would actually be. Very successful.
But, you know, that's why. You know, to me, the the. You're trying to convey. The difference between these small systems that the boards may have, they're great, we love them, and these really big systems, what are you willing to tolerate? That's really the only thing that this is. Well, no, there's a, there's another thing. And that is how much of the energy goes to line. Okay, those are the two issues. One is this, one is how big they are, and the other is how much of the energy goes to line. And that's why I tried to to try and separate them because. You know, although a group net metering situation doesn't all go back to line. It does have to all go back to people who are subscribers in one regional system. Like EverSource or uh New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, which is somewhat of a localization, okay? It's somewhat of a, whereas the big guys who build the five megawatt or ten megawatt or twenty megawatt system. They can sell it to anybody, anywhere. Okay, and that's a distinction that I think needs to be brought out, that the larger something is, the less. The less likely it is that they're gonna, that that it's gonna be used local. This, this is not clear to me that you're making those two distinctions. You already read it? You don't think I did that? The the distinction between. A purely commercial. System unlimited size and. A one megawatt system that would be. Um, you know, basically Rex would all be bought by. And I get, I know we got rid of Rex, but. Um, to me, it just doesn't jump out and.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna just jump in here, we need to move this along, we can spend all night arguing about really, really minor stuff.
The re- reason. Well, can I, can we go back to the first one?
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that again.
No, the the logical connection, um so after the town meeting vote thing, which I think we should keep in, then we put. The next sentence, so for the past year, the board and the energy committee, because I think they've. Put a lot of um, a lot of time into this.
Yeah, we don't exclude them.
Yeah.
So, so the. So the past year.
So for the past year, the board and energy committee have met with many experts.
Yeah, energy committee.
Okay.
Well, I think that the link with David brought up is like, well, why are you even saying that? And it's like, okay, now we're.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have that.
If I might ask, do you want them to be explicit about the next piece, which is that you're. You're preparing, you're issuing a survey to gauge the root of the town about changes to be. For the zoning ordinances. And what in, you know, in response.
Yes, that was it, that was in the original.
That's the first first sentence. Um, it's not the first sentence in that, but it's the first sentence in, I think, Mark's and everybody else's.
Right. It was, it was, yeah, but that's gone now.
Well, no, no, it's just gone from his.
No, it's not, it it just moved it to the end, that's all, it's the last sentence.
Yeah, no, I think it needs to be at the top.
I do, I think that's.
No, what are, what are we saying? Uh, put so, oh, no, we got that.
Yeah.
So then, please read the information below, reply to the questions.
Did the rain start?
It's coming.
Yeah.
So the paragraph after the one that we have decided to use. Nat's first.
Mm-hmm.
Paragraph, I think the one that starts soon line. I think that one goes as well.
Yes, correct. Yep, cause Nat just summarized it.
Okay, so so let's go over that, the first paragraph again, and then race through the rest of it. Presently, over twelve percent of line properties produce electricity directly through small scale roof and ground mounted solar panels. This percentage is among the highest in the region and is expected to grow. That electric power is both created and used in line. Beyond small scale solar panel arrays, there are several other ways for the town to achieve its hundred percent renewable goal. For example, Lime residents should know that they have the option of switching suppliers to one that offers a hundred percent green renewable energy. Source? Oh, a a yeah, source of electricity. The Lime community may also have the option of joining a nonprofit community power aggregation coalition of several regional towns in order. To leverage their buying power to get access to cheaper and greener. Uh, energy, so that's good.
Can I say two, two, just sorry?
Yeah.
Um, I think Lime residents should, the should know is extraneous in that sentence is Lime residents. Have the option.
Okay.
So that taking out should know that.
Yeah, yeah, that saves space.
And then in a, it's not just an aggregate of several regional towns, it's um. Over, at the moment, it's over thirty New Hampshire towns. I'm just trying to make it obvious that it's a statewide.
Okay, so also has to do with power allocation.
Of of over thirty New Hampshire.
Of over thirty, good. Over thirty.
New Hampshire towns.
For towns, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to the next paragraph. Another way to a hundred percent renewable is to allow. Larger, so this is where we got caught up before. We can just have larger.
Yep.
Okay.
Want to say multi acre? I think that's what you.
That's a good, I thought that was a good term. Are people okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so we're taking out. One reservation.
Multi acre.
Uh, multi acre solar arrays here in line.
Yep.
Uh, non residential.
And then multi again.
Yeah, multi acre.
That's good.
Multi acre solar arrays can be either group net metered or commercial.
Yep.
In the state of New Hampshire, group net metered arrays are limited to. One megawatt in capacity. Panels arrayed on five to seven acres is, well, now we're back to that space. Yeah, I I think we need to take that out.
Context here seems useful. It wasn't, I think it was too much, too many words for your.
Yeah, but the only thing, I'm just thinking from a regulatory. We haven't settled that. I mean, we can't, if we say that here, panels arrayed on five to seven acres, that's about half of the average.
Now, that's too confusing.
Yeah, I I, first of all, I don't think we can guarantee that, that um.
Well, you just said we could.
We, we, we can, but we, we can't guarantee it until we guarantee it. This is putting, we have to vote on that. That's gonna be a vote of the board, how we're gonna handle the conditional use permits. We haven't done that. What do people think?
What if we just put a period after, maybe on capacity and take out the.
Current debtable.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, we're gonna have to decide that.
Yeah.
But we haven't.
Yeah.
Why don't you just leave five to seven acres in the process?
Okay.
I think that there's some concern that you get the confusion of is, does that mean five to seven? You know, parking lot of panels or what we're all thinking of.
Right, and we, we already have that in the introductory data, or five to seven, don't we?
Yeah, we do, still have it.
You don't have the context that they're not parking lot, but that's.
Yeah, but I don't think.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't think.
I don't think you need to put the.
Uh, personally. Yeah, I agree. All right, there is no state mandated limit to the size of a commercial solar array. Group net metered facilities tend to serve members who are relatively local. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, relatively, since they must all be subscribers to the same electric utility company. The power generated from commercial facilities can be sold to anyone, anywhere. Either type of solar array will contribute to reducing fossil fuel usage and carbon emissions. Very good.
Well, um, if we go back to the the local, that what kind of.
Yeah, I'm a little.
Um, relatively local, um, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking upper valley. You know, when you say relatively local.
Well, you mean.
And but it's not, it's, you can sell the, the power. To anybody in the state as long as you're on that same distribution system. So, you know, when they were talking about doing the one up on the Bailey's property, they were going to sell the power to.
Southern New Hampshire.
Southern New Hampshire, which I would not say is relatively local.
Well, New Hampshire's not a big state.
No, but when.
I guess I'm, I guess I was just trying to, I was, I was trying to point out. That neither of these methods guarantees that lime residents. Exclusively benefit.
Yeah, and I think that's important.
And that's what I'm trying to bring out.
So let's see.
The best you can do is the localization of the power system of a given company. Like, and and New Hampshire Electric Cooperative is probably a bit more local than EverSource. And so then, so then it's a little more true. You're never gonna get it down to the town. Uh, so there's always going to be this shipment of power away. And we, and that means we are always, no matter what. Uh, going to have built something on Lime's land. That is serving people outside of line. And that's the point that I, that's inescapable. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a good motive, yeah.
And but well, it's, it's, it's not a good, I mean, it's some, it's something that needs to be out there.
That's what I'm saying.
Because somebody else is going to say, well, why can't you?
Trying to agree with you.
All right.
Because I think it's rather deceptive to going back to your very first sentence in that second paragraph, another way to a hundred percent renewable is to allow larger non residential. It's not going to. Guarantee that lime is getting that power. And so it does, you know, again, Bailey farm that. You know, that was not going to do anything towards Lime's one hundred percent renewal. And so I think it's very misleading to say that there is another way to allow these larger systems.
I don't think I've misled. I think I've stated, I've stated.
So, David, what, what, what are you referring to?
The very, the second paragraph, the first sentence.
Oh, another way to a hundred percent.
What if we, David, what if we said another way to get closer to the hundred percent renewable?
You're not, there's no guarantee that. Um, you know, putting in either a group net meters uh, system or a commercial system in line is going to get the town.
Yeah.
Anywhere closer to that hundred percent.
Well, so what you're trying to say, Matt, is it, I agree with, but I don't think you're saying, I agree with David. I don't think you are saying it here.
I don't know, I, I, I guess I got the sense that. And I don't know this for a fact, but I got the sense that people, uh, particularly small group net metering situations. Are looking locally for their subscribers when they sign them up. Cause they give you this petition thing and you've got to sign them up, okay? So, you know, you don't, you're not gonna go to California to sign somebody up. You know, you're gonna go around your neighborhood first. So I'm just saying that there, that, that, you know, there is that, and it's facilitated by the fact that if you're all on the same street. Uh, or region of town, you're likely all using the same uh, electric company. So I guess I was trying to make, and that's the impression that I got when Mark gave his little spiel about it. And there's actually one from the state of New Hampshire that, that.
So, but that's, that's not what you're saying here. It, it says another way to a hundred percent renewable is to allow larger multi. Acre solar arrays here in line. Multi acre solar arrays can be group net metered or commercial. The state of New Hampshire group net metered, okay. There is no statement and limit to the size of a commercial solar array. Group net. Yeah, I mean, I, it, it's not clear where you're going here. There is no statement and limit to the size of commercial solar array. Group net metered facilities tend to serve members. Yeah, relatively local is not a good term. Since they must all be subscribed. What, what about?
I think the subscribers to the same electrical utility company is eventually accurate portion.
Right, so what if, what if we say group net metered? Facilities may serve or can serve.
Yeah.
Or you just say they, you're not, neither the facilities serve members who are, who are all subscribers to the same electrical utility.
But I think tend to might actually, the reason I like tend to is because. It would be the typical. Okay, typically, if you look at group net metered situations, I think they are relatively local.
Yeah, I get.
I mean, I guess it actually, it actually was first introduced by Mark as neighborhood group net metering.
I, I, I get what you're saying, but group net metering is not necessary.
I like, I like this, this way, I like this flow. Group net metered facilities tend to serve members. Who are all subscribers to the same electric utility.
What did you have after facilities? Back to the tend to.
Tend to serve members who are.
Um, don't they have to?
I think it's, I think it's not even ten, I think by.
Yes, I crossed it out and put it back. Group that metered facilities serve members who are all subscribers to the same electric utility company.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It's not ten. Okay, so say it again. Group that metered facilities.
Services serve members who are all subscribers to the same utility company.
Good. Take out ten to.
Relatively local since they must is taken out.
And all be, yes.
Oh, and, and all be.
Yeah.
Who are subscribers to?
Same electric utility company, yep.
And if we're, if we're getting the dantig on the next sentence, our generator and commercial facilities didn't solve to be one.
Within New England?
Why, they can't, they can't go out anywhere?
Yes, you can't sell the electricity out of.
Is that right?
I mean, you can. You could set up an instrument like a synthetic BBA or a. I mean, our difference is. That's, you know, you know, selling it inside.
All right, well, we'll go with what you're saying.
And then the last, the last sentence, that is, in considering the zoning changes needed to allow large. Multi acre solar arrays in line, the planning board must consider the balance between responding to the need to convert. To totally green energy and the aesthetics of our com- community.
Okay.
Period.
So, uh, needed to allow multi acre solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just strike the last two sentences because we lead with them. Essentially, the sense of that we lead, we lead with.
Right, okay.
On a personal level, I would, I would disagree that there's. That there's a one to one opposition between green and aesthetics.
Yeah.
Which is, so I, I'm a material. I personally would.
You don't see a, a conflict?
Right.
Yeah, I know there, but there are.
You don't think that there's a balance?
Saying balancing between.
Do we answer that?
Uh, no. If, if you're saying there's a balance. Aesthetics that.
David.
Seems to say that they're.
Yeah, but, but we, we, we know that there are people who, who do.
So I guess I would, I would.
So which, which sentence are you looking at?
The word is the, the balance between ener- green energy and aesthetics.
So, I guess I would wonder, is there a way to not call it a balance, to say that you're considering. Principles that you're considering green energy aesthetic consideration, opposed to balancing.
Yes.
Instead of a versus.
Yes.
It's more of a.
I agree.
I know the balance actually. But balance doesn't imply a versus. It doesn't imply a conflict, it implies a balance.
I will say in my, when I, when I hear balance, I think of the classic uh, scale where. Where a ba- the balance, it means there's something on one side, something on the other.
Right. Right, and it's usually, it's usually not like this, okay? It's usually like this, where there is a balance.
Thought considering, uh.
So you're weighing on, you're weighing, you're weighing multiple factors, but that doesn't say all the factors are.
Considering, board must.
I guess this.
Must consider the interplay?
Well, I was thinking about complimenting.
Complimenting.
Uh, somehow board must consider.
Engine between.
No, 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 no tensions.
That's even worse than that.
How about, how about just considering multiple factors such as aesthetics and.
Must consider multiple factors such as.
Yeah.
Uh. The need to.
Such as local generation and local generation. And aesthetics or.
The planer must consider the ba- uh, the ba- uh, multiple.
Multiple factors such as local generation.
Three ways.
I don't think.
Where you got another property rights. That's, talk about value.
Multiple factors such as, what was the first one?
Local generation.
Yeah.
And the aesthetics of our community.
Land use.
Well. Such as what, converting to totally green then?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's something that. People make a choice to go totally green. We don't do that for them.
Right, yeah, so, so, well, we, we. We got local generation and we got aesthetics. What else do we want?
That's fine.
Local, uh, such as local generation and aesthetics, that's one. So we're taking out.
I mean, the whole reason.
Economies of scale. Trying to think, because I'm trying to think about third number for you.
Uh, we don't need. Yeah, because we're saying such as, there are multiple ones, but we're only gonna tell you two.
Rest is left to the exercise of the reader.
Right, it's their imagination.
Yes.
Anyway, uh, Nat's, very nice.
Yeah.
Nicely done. John, I just wanted, have a question, the, the first sentence here. To David Robins' point. I mean, if we say another way to a hundred percent renewable. I mean, David is thinking that it's not. A way to a hundred percent renewable, because we want to.
Yeah, well, let's, okay, let's, let's revisit that.
Yeah, just.
Another way to a hundred percent renewable is to allow larger multi acre solar arrays.
Part of the solution, part is, the multi acre residential solar arrays may be part of the. Solution.
How about another step towards?
Another step.
Well, what's the difference between that and another way?
As opposed to.
Step and way.
Yeah, I mean. There you go.
Way is like all the way and a step is.
Step is sort of, uh, yeah, one of the log is digital.
Okay, another, another step. Another step on the way?
Step toward.
Toward.
Step toward.
As long as you say some of you that it may, because it's, it's, there is no guarantee that. A group net metered or commercial system is going to provide.
So we'll say.
Power to line.
May allow.
Maybe to allow.
Maybe.
Another step towards hundred percent renewable may be to allow.
Yep. Yep.
To allow larger multi acres.
Yep.
Multi acre solar arrays can be either group. Netted, net, net metered or commercial. In the state, well, do we want to go through?
No, I think we got it.
We got it?
I think we got it too.
Okay. And now we can move on to the questionnaire.
Yep, well, are you concerned about any of the other things that you had about other issues? Which is not gonna include.
Oh, yeah, I, I do, but.
I, I think, I think they're not part of this. There are other issues for when we're, you're right, the regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm going, I'm going with the majority.
It's a good list, but I don't think we need to twist everyone's mind around that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
So let me make sure, I am going to take Marx and Nat's and make them one.
Yeah, and it seems like, um, from.
Well, wait a minute, no.
Good question.
No.
One and three.
And that's.
Yeah.
It's not, all you need is Max.
No.
No, 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 because that's doesn't have the data, reference data.
Doesn't have reference.
And the, and the, and the motivating.
That's on the next page. I, I put in my own reference there.
Yeah, except that's, that's too late.
Okay.
So that.
So I'm just gonna take this with the language that we came up about. One megawatt producing twelve hundred megawatt hours.
Yep.
And I'm gonna graft onto that after these next paragraphs.
Hmm, you also have to cite the one, I mean, there's a bunch of changes.
Yeah, yeah, I got all of those, all of those changes.
And we're.
And I'm gonna graft that onto Nat's.
Yeah, the other thing that I had thought would be useful is to put the reference data. Between. The. Solar energy draft question heading and the actual questions. I mean, if you were in your exam, that's the way they give you, they give you the reference data and then they'd start asking the questions. So you can, we can flick up to the reference data if you wanna understand the question.
Where do people wanna have? You wanna do it in that's way or?
Well, I, unfortunately, I tend to think of it the other way because it gives the context for what I'm reading.
Exactly, that's what I think. And you're not gonna, you know, if you want context for the questions, you just go back to the reference.
Yeah, I think that's true, I agree.
But here, you don't have any of that data as you're reading through this, and maybe you don't need it.
Also might have shrunk everything down to the point where this is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so little.
It is gonna be.
I think you've got.
Single.
Done a good job.
One page double.
Double sided piece of paper.
Remember, remember Jerry O'Connor, one page.
Okay, so we're, so we're putting it back in its old place?
We're gonna keep it where it is.
Yeah.
And so I'm just gonna take this and.
Right.
Put it in there.
Yeah, yeah. And then the questionnaire is another.
Okay, so here we are. Let's do the questionnaire.
Which one are we gonna use the?
Well.
So.
Original one.
When I take out then non residential and say multi acre.
We've got Rich Manglins here, that we're gonna use.
No, Rich, well, we can use, which is, but it's not the original one.
No, but I think his.
That's fine with me.
Which one?
This is Richard's.
He has a four, a five and a six.
Oh my God, yeah, I, I got lost in all this formatting.
Yeah, I mean, right. But anyway, that's the one that he sent.
Okay.
Well, it's, yeah.
And, and you can tell which one is his because he has a number seven. Uh which is basically the question.
And it says our mangy edits at the top too.
Oh, it does?
I guess maybe that's the, the one that I didn't print.
So here.
Guess, I guess.
I can.
I didn't print. Oh, wow.
Do you have notes on yours?
Yeah.
Good and good, I have good, yeah.
Want me to print out a couple of copies of it?
If we're gonna start.
Yeah, that, that way, uh, Mike can have one too.
Efficient, so that I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We will arrange it, we have.
We will make it so.
Contacts.
Technology.
Make it so.
Yeah, cuz that's a good place to start.
I, um, no, I don't have that one.
Well, you do.
All right, well, so how many people need rich mangies?
Make a bunch of copies.
Two, three?
Yeah.
Just three? Oh, four.
Okay.
You have it, David?
I think so. Our mangy edits at the top.
Yeah.
So, obviously layout, I, so my bias and my whole situation, so I, uh, so with Wagner, I uh helped cite the solar energy farms as well as manage a, they went farm over eight, so I sold about one and a half million REX my, over the last.
That's why you like Rex.
I am, I am well versed in the, the ISO New England markets and REX and all those really in length things.
That's great.
Like, I have a question, just, this may be, not pertinent, but, okay, so I'm buying a hundred percent green energy from direct energy. So they're using Rex to supply me with that, and that's good, right?
That is good, it, no, that is good.
Okay.
The Rex can be from, depending on how they're, they could be from a different jurisdiction, so Rex.
Oh, these are coming from Texas, yeah.
Texas Rex are much less valuable because Texas doesn't have any renewable energy that they, so right now, if you're qualified for Massachusetts, which New Hampshire is our, our solar, our cross qualified for Massachusetts. Those are trading right now around thirty nine dollars, whereas a Texas might be for like two dollars.
Really?
So, and so every generator within New England, there's, uh, there's something called the equal GIS and that's where essentially the, when you're, when you generate a megawatt hour of electricity, you get one rec within that system. And so that rec, it's, it's out, it's just called a certificate, it's just like a certificate electronically. So it has, it carries with it, it's qualified under Connecticut class one, Massachusetts class one, New Hampshire class one, but not Rhode Island, not Maine, or what, whatever it is, but it has, basically you can think of it as a bunch of check, you know, boxes to fill in, and a certificate, you'll have certainly those checked in.
So, and the ones in Texas are not.
The ones in Texas are, they're usually independently certified, so it's not like they're selling them to you and also to somebody in California and to somebody in Minnesota, they're still only sold once. But because they're, they're just less expensive because Texas has no compliant, they're, they're not being used by a utility to meet a mandate.
Right, so the electricity that I'm using is not generating as much or not.
Giving as much. You would actually giving, it might even be giving more benefit because your, what it's displacing is probably a full plant damage access. So that might actually, so environmentally that may actually, this is where we go from simple, we're, now we're getting much.
Yeah, well, this is what.
Good enough.
We definitely wouldn't wanna put credit, put credit as for, for a healthy innovation.
Good, so, actually, I don't need.
That's really interesting. So it's, it's, it's a three dimensional chess.
Yeah, and I don't know why more people do it. I put something on the list sir, a month and a half ago, explain exactly, for line, how to sign up for a hundred percent green and I, I think there's been very.
It's inertia, it's just inertia.
One more thing, you know, you gotta do, and that's why the, that's why the opt out as opposed to the opt in, so it's no much for.
Right.
Successful, it's the same thing with, like, your company gives a four O one K badge, how many more people do it if they're opting, if they have to opt down as opposed to opt in, even though it's literally free money.
Exactly, yeah.
So, the data is that about a, a hundred customer accounts in Lyme are using the competitor.
Oh, that's.
That's better than I thought.
A hundred out of. How many?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
So twelve and a half percent.
Probably solar people.
So, but no, is that, but those are not, those are not the solar reasons, so that's twenty five percent of Lyme is using. I mean, you know, not exactly, but in the neighborhood of twenty five percent, that's.
Well, that's good to know, Hebe, I didn't realize it.
Yeah, that's very interesting.
Well.
So Hebe, did you hear that in Hanover, only like four percent of the people opted up to a hundred percent? Green, you know, it's like, what is with that?
Well, it's like, like saying, you know, it's.
Well, people aren't paying attention, I think is the key, but the thing is, the thing that was about Hanover is they picked um granite plus as the default level, which is thirty some percent.
So it's better than.
Which is better than the twenty three percent, which is the granite base.
But even so, I mean, I'm really surprised in that community.
So what was that, the?
Only four percent opted to a hundred percent.
They're, they were.
And, and this is in which town?
Hanover.
In Hanover?
In Hanover, yeah, it's like one year.
Wow.
Um, you have a mean percentage?
I don't have a mean percentage.
She has a kind percentage.
All I know is that if, that's the, I, I, no, but I don't.
It would have required, it, it's, it's two parts there, a reason is, one is that it required action.
Right.
And, and it was also more expensive.
Expensive, yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah, well, nobody could afford that in Hanover.
So Hebe, they, they don't wanna start everybody at a hundred because they're worried that it'll be, people be nervous about the cost, right?
Four percent.
Cuz if you could start people at a hundred, then everybody could opt out if they wanted to go lower, which.
But that would have made their costs go up, their, their, their electric bill go up, and then nobody would want community power.
Okay.
So they might not afford it for.
All right, folks.
And this is to get everybody on board, that then produces leverage.
Right, I guess I'm just wishing.
Yeah, the leverage is the big deal.
Leverage, you know, you had the two problems, we're green and we're cheap.
Um, all right, let, let's do this, what is an acceptable size limitation for one or more solar installations in Lyme?
I agree, I think none is confusing and I would change none to just a statement that says large solar system should not be allowed.
Okay.
Or, or should that be?
Is what?
No, no, no.
Large system should not be allowed.
Well, but the.
That's what we mean by none, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so does that mean, but, uh, all the other options refer, refer to acreage.
Right.
So are we saying that, is, is that mean, is that intended to mean point one acres with, like, the person who has a single pole mounted would not feel?
This, they're only talking about the, uh, something that would be a group net metered or a commercial. I know we got rid of residential, but.
Um, I'm, I'm asked, um, um, you guys have a, you guys have been through this so many times, I think you might not even know everything that you know and have gone into the question, and that's why I'm asking, so I'm asking as a complete, more or less.
Well, the question is only, this question is only addressing large solar.
Then we've changed that language to multi acre too.
Yeah, multi acre, so, I mean, that, the question doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with.
Half an acre, an option here.
Wow.
Well, we can.
I think multi acres, oh, multi acre system should not be allowed.
Well, mo- yeah, but then you have less than half an acre, that's not a multi acre system.
So, that's what I'm.
That's a.
No, how about no, um. No systems larger than zero, should not, you know, I mean, I, I think that's why I'm. I think I thought about this.
We should only allow residential systems.
Only smaller. Only small, only, only small scale residential should be allowed, or no, forget residential.
And I think, and I think you also need to change the, the structure of the question. An acceptable size limitation, maybe say, what would you consider a solar array size that was too big to be in line? And then you could say, answer one, uh, any size, uh, small scale so- solar only. And then you could go through your different.
Well, small scale is already allowed, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, so why do we even need, this, this is not about small scale.
No, but it, it just, it just gives you this.
So what is your phrasing that?
That any, that any size.
Where is it?
Of a multi, multi acre array is too big, that would mean I don't want any multi acre array.
Okay, so where's, where?
Here is I.
What would you consider a solar array size that was too big to be?
See, I don't like the cat, that's such a negative. It's, that's, that's kind of a biased phrasing.
Okay.
I would say, what is an acceptable size limitation for one or more?
That's biased too, be acceptable.
Not.
Well, I think what we're trying.
What is your preference for size limitation? And I think.
And then I think you, and then I think you.
What is your preference?
Yeah, okay, so, so what is your, what is your preference?
You know, that's not.
So, so keep, keep going, what is your preference?
Is your preference.
For what?
For solar array size.
Or you're talking about a limitation, what are you talking about?
For maximum size.
Yeah, so.
Well, if you say, what is your preference for solar array size, and then you've got all underneath here, you've got all the different sizes to check. You, the, the thing is, you're trying to define the range that they can put in. You're not just, you're not just saying you have to install only this size array, you've gotta, you've gotta have the range.
X and less.
Yes.
Right.
True, okay.
So.
Is your preference for a limit on the size of a large multi?
For the, what is your preference for the size limit?
For the.
Just for a solar installation?
On the size. Okay, what is your preference for a limit on the size of a large multi acre array?
Why not just have it as?
A larger.
Or why not just a solar system or a solar array?
Yeah.
Okay, so what is, what is your, what is your preference for the size limit of what?
For a limit on the size.
What is your preference for a limit on a solar array? And then you could say only small scale solar arrays should be allowed.
But what, what if somebody doesn't want, doesn't, doesn't want that?
We already allow it.
So then why do they need to answer?
Because, because you're trying to take out none.
Why are we trying to take out none?
Are you saying they should not be allowed?
Yeah, I mean, some people are, I, I definitely know.
About that saying large system, and I, I would, um, the, the use of the word small, or the, the term small scale is not defined anywhere previously in the document.
Gonna be confusing.
And so, and you haven't talked about it, so to me.
We have, we talked about. Small scale solar roof and ground mounted panels.
Yeah, but they're not gonna remember that when they get here.
Well, I mean, David's saying we haven't talked about small scale, we have talked about small scale.
But that's. Yeah. It still, it still, it still requires somebody to say, yeah, I want small scale, well. What if they, what if they just are, they don't want any solar? They, they had a bad experience with a solar panel when they were a child.
Well, we're, we're not really asking about small scale stuff here, I mean.
No, it's, it's, it just seems like, where did that come from?
Should we organize them large to small so that they don't che- check the first thing that comes?
Oh, come on, I know, I don't wanna be that, that childish, no. I mean.
You should just say, you know, um. No large scale system here, just no.
What about, what about, I don't want solar, uh, solar arrays in line?
Yeah, just some blank statement that says, I don't want them.
Which is what none.
None, none is fine.
Which I thought.
No, because none is.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't want. Any solar, I don't want any solar arrays. I like none better.
Any large.
No, it's, it.
You're, they're already small scale.
Right, but we're not, we're not defining that, we're defining everything else.
So I don't want any la-.
I don't want any solar. I don't wanna see it.
And you're gonna have to close your eyes. So, so we're saying any solar arrays and what?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a legitimate question, I mean, I guess.
I know, I know people who feel that way.
All right.
The next, the next one you might wanna say happening or what else, just to be consistent with all the.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Say you need to get rid of those first three. Half acre, one acre, or two acres, you, you haven't talked about anything under five to seven acres.
What you said, the half acre.
You said, you said multi acre, so.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Three. Yeah, cuz we're not.
Anything under five.
We're not allowing two acres now, right, cuz we have.
Right, right.
Thousand square feet.
Right, so this, this gives people a chance.
It just doesn't seem reasonable in the fact that you're most likely never gonna see something that's small.
Might.
No, it's possible.
I don't think it's economically viable to be.
But that's not our judgment.
I know it's not your judgment, but, um, you know, realistically.
Well, two acres, you could have a group net.
It might be economically viable if it was on a host's land and that host was being reimbursed.
And things like.
In other words, that would eliminate.
That's you and like a couple of your neighbors.
Yeah.
But that seems, I could, that, that to me seems like I could, I could see that.
Okay.
Transplant, I mean, I could see that being something that someone will be interested in and just go over.
Exactly.
So, you know, one, one, one thing we're doing here is we're saying, we're only giving people one, two, five, uh, one, two, five to seven, what if instead of saying greater than five to seven acres, we simply say other size? So that, um, if they want, you know, say, well, I, I like a three acre or sized or less.
People are not gonna have that granularity of a.
Okay. So, one, one, two, one, but what?
Less than what?
Anything less than a hundred acres.
How many, uh, many ones do you get out of a hundred acres?
Less than half an acre, one acre or less, two acres or less, five to seven acres or less.
We had, uh, it was requested that we have half an acre or less to be consistent in the, in the phrasing.
Yes.
So, uh, is this what we wanna, uh, say? I don't want any solar arrays in line? Half an acre or less, one acre or less, two acres or less, and then greater than five to seven acres.
You mean, there had to be a five to seven, right?
Yeah.
And then, uh, and then bigger or greater, greater than five to seven.
Yeah.
And then how is the question, um?
What i- what is your preference for the limit on the size of?
Solar array.
Of a.
What is your preference for a limit on a solar array? Yep.
On the size of a solar in line? Right?
Okay, I guess that's fine. Yes, I have to say anything other than that.
It's that's a we're asking it's about size.
Okay, so.
Yep.
So what is your preference for the limit on the size of a solar array in line?
One, I don't want any. And then all the other sizes.
I don't want any solar arrays.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so so we're done with one?
Yep.
That's amazing. Okay. Would you object to a large array near your property? No, yes, and this, I mean, I know what he's saying here, but it's kind of a double negative, like. Scrambles of brain, not if I couldn't see it.
Only if I couldn't see it.
Yes, yes, I have no bananas. No, but then that's you're saying I would object. I would object only if I couldn't see it.
Yeah, yeah. So you wanna see it then?
You wanna see it. It's a double negative. You you're stuck with a double negative.
But we see where I can't see it in the next question.
What?
In the original version.
Number three?
Yes.
Okay, so we can just take it out? Cause it's we ask.
We do ask it.
Okay, let's just take it out, cause it's phrased. No, no, no.
But those are different questions, too. Um relates to an array near your own property.
You're right, you're right.
Relates to.
Thank you.
Proposition generally.
Yeah. Would you object to a larger of your property?
Not if it was screened. I would not object.
So we're not gonna talk about a specific size in that question?
No.
We're just gonna say.
This is this is just to to elicit people's feelings about. How I would how how it is for them if it was next to.
What are we gonna say for that third option?
I don't know. I sort of think that we should be thinking about.
Can you translate that?
Guiding them towards a policy that makes sense.
Well, they're guiding us. They're guiding us in number one. So. The reason to leave that open in number two is because we don't know what in each particular case their guidance to us is.
Our role here is to elicit.
Yeah, we're not guy.
Well, it's just. No, go ahead.
Uh, if you got back sixty percent that said that they were that they were in support of a large array. How would you know to somebody might say a large array is two acres, someone might say it's five acres. I think.
Well, we could we could go. I'll tell you how. We would we would look, we could look. At uh anybody, if we get sixty percent, then we could go back to number one on the same questionnaire. And say, that's the size that they want.
Oh, God. We need an Excel file.
No, God, no.
You have to review every one.
Yeah, but if we only get.
No, no, no.
Twelve returns.
Well, that that's another issue. Let's not get.
There at least what in this room?
Yeah, we're all gonna.
They're gonna give a hundred percent.
As often as you can.
Right, well, I got a husband too. Well, I get multiple times. So so under.
But often.
Would you object to a large? Would you object to a large array near your property? No, yes, not if it was well screened.
I would not object if it was well screened, just to be to get to the earlier concern that you've got double negatives or.
Yeah.
Hard to phrase the question.
Okay, the only thing I have with well screened is is um.
Well, it's sort of the same.
Or not visible.
Not visible. I would I say, yes.
Yeah, another another.
If it was if it was invisible. Are we back to the knots?
Can they make them invisible?
I would not object if it was not visible.
No, God.
Is this on two?
Yes.
Object only if it was visible.
How how did we get? It's like we're. Why do we have object?
Cause we've met the common person.
Would would you?
I would object only if it was visible.
Would it bother you if?
No, would you um?
Would it bother you if a larger way was located near your property? Yes or no?
Would it bother you? Would it bother you? Yes.
Would you welcome a larger array near your property?
Would it bother you, I think is very good.
That's actually.
What would bother you to have a larger?
Would it bother you?
If a larger way array is located near your property?
The large array is located near your property.
So and one of the responses could be, no, I would welcome it.
Okay. But what about the other one?
No, I would welcome it. Well, you still have to say um.
No.
No.
Then you just.
No, I would welcome it and yes. And.
Okay.
Yes, I would sue them.
I don't know. Yeah, really.
If people care about.
Well, I guess, yes.
And then be factor.
Because we wanna, I I think we wanna know at least generally, what is the? You know, when when I think that to most people, there's. I'm trying to think about myself pre having any information and it was like. Oh, um, a larger raise is a is a is a big array. And if my feeling was, I don't want that near my house. That's sort of like just a very general, simple temperature taking.
Right, a lot of people, yeah.
All right, so would it bother you if a large array is located near your property? No, yes.
No, I would welcome it.
Well, I mean, what's the difference between just saying no and yes or or?
There's some people that are like, oh, I really want that.
But then then we should say, yes, I can't stand them. But no, let's just do no and yes.
No, I'm not.
Vicky, the thought of data analysis with that kind of answers frighten.
Let's just do no and yes.
All right, all right.
Because I mean, if you really wanna gauge the temperature, you would do a Likert scale.
That's a binary.
I know, I'm sure you're ready for that.
You're you're way over my head.
Oh, that's the like the pain scale, one to five. You know, zero to ten.
Pen and put it in your.
Zero to ten or one to five. Agree to disagree, that kind of thing.
All right, let's just keep it.
I hate them personally.
Good, let's not do it. So we're all the way past two.
Yep.
To large solar arrays should be allowed along. Check all that apply. Route ten south of the common. Dorchester. East Bedford, Baker Hill, Acorn, Goose Pond. Where it is visually unobtrusive. That's kind of weird.
Yeah.
Wh- why not just where I can't see it?
Because you it's hard to get where I can't see it. So as long as it's like not front and center.
Okay.
So it's moderately visible, but not.
Okay.
Not in my face.
And so. Route ten south of Lime Common includes the commercial district.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
So do do we wanna give them an option of just the commercial district?
No.
People don't know where that is.
Too.
Okay, yeah, you're right. They won't know where it is. That's right, you're right.
And then they're going to wonder why you chose such random roads.
Um, but they're not random.
But they're not. It's not your road, right? So you're happy.
But I know it's not.
So should we say large solar array should be allowed along?
Should we be calling them multi acre solar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should put other and allow them to filter.
Yes, yes.
So we put other.
Uh, where are you putting other?
Uh, number three. So if they want one on their road, they could put it. Um, you know, other please specify.
Okay, so let's just make sure we we.
Um, so we're we're leaving everything in and then just adding other.
Yes, that I wanted to ask. Where's where it is visually obtrusive, where I can't see it and nowhere.
Yeah.
You you wanna keep all of those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're all the way to number four. Like to congratulate everybody. Should we allow solar arrays in lime where land was clear cut for the primary purpose of the solar installation? Yes or no?
We had a couple of these comments that objected to this question in its entirety because we don't really have the right to. People from.
Well, I think I think this.
I'm not.
I think this came, we've had a lot of discussions about this. And my feeling about, I mean, I blame it on me probably.
Okay.
I'm I'm concerned about incentive incentivizing um cutting down. Uh forests. So if you have a five to seven acre forest. Um, and it's cut down for. I know it's not a hundred acres, but bear with me.
I'm sitting on my hands.
Yeah.
And the counter argument is that people can already clear cut their land.
But that's that's a totally different issue. We do have the ability to limit the land that can be used. Um, as a solar array, if the land was clear cut within a certain amount of time. And this is just, this is something that is important. To me, and and I think it's important to a number of people in town, and they should have an ability to to weigh in.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts to ask the question. Sure.
Okay. Should we limit construction of large solar arrays to only those projects serving primarily lime residents and businesses? Yes and no. Daniel, it's a good question.
So why why is this better than the way number four was before? Where it was, should we allow large solar arrays in line? Where land was clear cut or only if the energy is used in within.
Because it's it's a totally different question.
One reason is that the yes, no needs to be at the end instead of stuck in the middle of the sentence.
What do you mean?
No, no, it's not. It's the formatting that you must have gotten, but.
No, no, I know. But that's that's change. That's what. Yeah, the way it was originally formatted. Where it was originally formatted, yes, no, right in the middle of the sentence, just to keep.
But you're asking a different question, Vicky, weren't you? You you're talking about a different phrasing.
Well, I mean. It just seems. Long winded.
That's okay. It's one sentence. It's not not gonna hurt anybody. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, primarily we've just made, no, the original four and four and five.
What are you looking at? Maybe I'm missing something.
No, you're not. I'm here.
Yeah, I mean, we're just dividing into two questions.
Oh, yeah. Should we limit the construction of large solar only to serve? Yeah.
Yeah.
So so on on number five, David raised an interesting question, which is. Right in a regu- with regulations, how how could the planning board do that? How could we limit? I don't know that we could say this has to be used in line.
Oh, we tried to before.
How?
You we talked to Kirsarge.
No, that that's a different issue.
Yeah. I mean, part of the application process for a net metered system is that you have to recruit your people. And you have to have their names and addresses. So we could ask for that. And or we could insist that the list not contain non lime residents.
That may go to court.
Yeah, that may go to court.
I can see somebody.
I mean, Kirsarge was a completely different issue because. There there was no solar use possible. They just it was never never an issue unless we changed the ordinance. But this is saying if it if it were possible. To construct uh mul- we gotta make this consistent, multi acre again.
Yep, yeah, I would. Don't worry about that.
Should we limit construction of multi acre arrays only to those projects serving primarily lime residents and businesses?
Well, the primarily there, I guess, is key.
But I I I again.
Even we couldn't.
Do that. What Kirsarge was not, it was not an enabled use. So it was never a question. This question is based on the on the assumption that it's an allowed use. So we're saying we're allowing this and we wanna know whether you want us to make this. A condition of approval. And I don't know. I mean, I think we need legal guidance. I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, what's David? What's David contact? You think that would go to court? I mean, would somebody could really contest that?
I don't know. I I don't know the Hampshire land law, land useful. Uh, rules at all, so I don't know. And it doesn't seem crazy to me to say. To have that be any more crazy than it seems to me to say, we're not gonna let you do this if you recently cut the trees down on your property.
All right, so let's just ask it.
And then we can ask it and then.
Take it from there.
If we get a strong uh signal from the responses, we can then go to council and say.
Right.
Is this permissible?
Good, good point. Okay, we're all the way to six.
Is there any concern that? That some people might wanna say at all, it's okay if it's quite corporate or uh handover or something. I'm I'm. Throwing that out there.
We're only gonna get like eight responses to this. And three of them will be long rambling emails that have.
They're all gonna respond, right? That's that's like six or eight. We've we've gotta do that.
We're gonna have to publicize this and.
Yeah, we gotta.
Call people we know and tell them.
Or just say, don't fill this out. You get three hundred dollars added to your.
No, you get a gift card. There's some guy who's running for office, who if you send a dollar to him. He's he's giving you a twenty dollar gift card and it's not illegal.
Really? He's trying to harvest names.
It's me.
He's trying to get to the fundraising threshold in order to be included.
Yeah, so he's. So so he's 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 skirting the actual election law.
He what he wants to be, as I understand it, is he wants to be included in.
In the debate.
Debate rule says.
You have to.
Many number of donors.
Who have this amount in.
Right.
I don't think it's a dollar amount. I think it's a number of donors.
He's pretty clever.
So he's paying them. Anyway, be that as it may. Number six, what is your interest in solar energy? I am installing, have installed, want to install a solar energy system on my property. I purchase a hundred percent renewable energy. Way to go, Tim.
What's the point of this question?
I don't know. People wanted it.
The energy committee was actually interested.
Is that right? Was that was that you guys?
Maybe. I I this was on, this was on the first one that I saw that I that I saw circulated.
I I don't understand how this relates to any.
I I don't either.
No, but it's interesting.
Well, actually. I would argue that the more things that are checked. Um, that don't involve building a large array. The that's gonna correlate with dislike of larger arrays. And the last one actually does relate to it. Would you participate in a group net metering? Uh, because that would require a larger.
Right.
So I would argue that it does have something to do with it. That one is in our mind, that's.
Yeah, it says I would be interested in purchasing solar energy from a neighbor if it were cost competitive, but I do not currently do so. Um, I I'd be fine. I mean, it's fine with me to have these and I'd be fine without.
It's at the end and if people run out of steam.
So not quite at the end because number seven.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this is where the pages of small.
What other thoughts, limits, or concerns do you have regarding multi acre? Yes, installation.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we take?
I don't think it should be called optional bonus question.
No, no. It's final jeopardy.
That's for the forty dollar gift card.
Well, extra credit.
Yeah, no, no.
Five thousand words or less. Please, please tell us about your life.
We're gonna have dramatic.
Yeah, take out.
Of the longest ones.
What you do though is make sure that you put it on a single sheet, both sides, and only leave a very small space at the bottom.
Now, we need to have.
No, there's gotta be.
Where our boxes are.
Yeah.
Please return by what date? And that needs to be right here on the at the bottom.
Do we want to just kind of general questions? Do you want to format this so that you could just fold it and have a return address?
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, that would be the outer. The outer.
If we do. Are we doing cover sheet? Are we doing one page, two sides with it? If you fold it correctly, you can just say.
Could you do if you can do it?
Do we care if we get back a questionnaire from someone who works for Kirsarge? Or works for Revision Energy or otherwise has an individual economic interest in in.
You mean who doesn't live in line?
No, who lives in line.
Not they should. No, what they why should?
I I'm just asking the question. I'm not. I don't have an answer. I'm just wondering.
Somebody.
Do you wanna be able to suss out potential conflicts?
But it's not a conflict of interest. I don't I don't see it as a conflict of interest. If somebody. Works in lime who's in the solar business, they they should have as much say as anybody else.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah. No, but I wouldn't make an exception for the dude. No, but do you feel differently?
No, I I I'm just posing the question, like, do you feel? Is there's, i- if someone works for a company that builds large solar arrays. Then do you discount their views on this at all? And I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just throwing.
The other the other way to look at it is they have more knowledge and they might be able to answer answer. Better.
Yeah, no, no, no lawyers.
How many people respondents do you think there would be that?
Two.
Yeah, and and I I there's 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 no way. It's a no way we could uh keep them out of it anyway.
Anybody who answers any question is sort of got a conflict of interest. You know, anytime you any time you make a statement.
Yeah, I, I.
Then that's your interest, and you're conflicted with all the other answers.
Well, it gets, I, I think, I think.
That's not a conflict of interest.
Financial. Yeah, it doesn't matter, I don't see it.
Anyway, I, I think it's more trouble than it's worth to.
Probably.
Yeah.
Well, we want it to be anonymous.
Yeah.
So, how would we even know?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, how else is, is he gonna be able to send in the five question here?
Friend or a relative?
That's right, we're gonna track IP addresses. Yeah, I've got my phone, I've got my iPad, I've got my desk.
You're going to put this together. And, so what are the next steps? Folks, let's go over the next step.
Did they?
Well, we should get a, a final version of this and circulate.
There is no audit available, but I have come in my. That I can.
Okay.
Reallocate.
We made a lot of changes.
So what are we doing?
So I would suggest that we get a final version of this.
Before sending it out.
And.
Oh, before spending money on printing.
Yeah, and that we, we speculated among this group, and everybody looked at it, people will catch typos, they might.
Okay, okay.
Or maybe there's some misunderstanding about something, and people.
You'll send the final version out to everybody, right?
Once I get it from you.
Yes, right, okay.
Alright. I'll, I will offer, and I'll also take a look this. You know, not, uh.
Yeah.
So you can send them.
You can argue. All that we do here.
Send it to all of the energy committee.
Yes, send it to the.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, with something like a caption that says proposed final info.
I, 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 no, I would, I would title it final questionnaire, but we're gonna let you look at it very quickly. Before we pull it away from you.[1675.04]